I'd like to start the mudding for the, um, this is a joint meeting, excuse me Joan. Uh, this is a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Police Commission. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and it's six oh two and five oh two, six oh two, five oh two, whatever. And I'd like to have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your republic, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We have a couple members that are on their way. But rather than delay, I'd like to just make sure everybody knows everybody on the Police Commission and on the Board of Selectmen, I assume. I can introduce folks.
So can you do that for the minute?
Yes. Would you like me to introduce my commissioner first or just come?
Sorry, I know.
You won't know that.
Oh, okay. Um, I am Jenna Caulfield. And we have my fellow commissioners, Tanisha Grant, Travis Schweizer, Eric Lemke, and Mike Long.
And our names are up here, so, um, you, I think you guys know all of us. Um, so this is, this is an annual presentation from the Police Commission. They come to us prior to us getting into our budget and the town manager's budget and present to the, uh, the Police Commission and the Police Department's budget as per the MOU and agreements that we have with the Police Commission. Um, Jenna, I believe you're gonna do the presentation tonight.
I am. Um, I will go to our podium. Uh, and I thought it would be helpful to kind of give you all a snapshot of who we are because we have four new faces on the Board of Selectmen as well as our new town manager. Um.
Miss Jenna, before you kick off into the presentation, uh, I'd like you to set it up and then I'd like Mike to
Yeah, Mike wants to.
kick off with a few words and then we can go from there.
Okay. Do you want me to introduce you to the police commissioner?
If you like, but that's all right.
Um, so the commission is made up of five members. We have two Republicans, two Democrats, one unaffiliated member. We meet monthly with the Police Department and the commission is responsible for maintaining good relations between the town and the citizens and the Police Department. We are responsible for setting up policies for the department, for creating and presenting the budget, and for personnel matters like hiring, firing, promotions, and things like that. And this is all laid out through the town charter as well as the MOU, which Wendy mentioned, which is between the commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the town manager. And it's also through Connecticut general statutes. You wanna, I don't, I don't know what Mike has to say, this is exciting.
Well, it's too bad that Kevin's not here yet, but that's okay. You know, he's probably the longest-serving board, uh, or commission member here this afternoon in this room. Uh, you know, also a former member of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen as well as this commission, and a half a dozen other boards and commissions. So I thought I'd just share a little bit of history shortly about why, why we're here. Now Jenna has touched on, on the functions of this commission, but it was, it's, um, oh, twenty-five to thirty years ago when Simsbury was still a small town. It was, you know, served by an understaffed and by today's standards relatively unsophisticated police department, which was nevertheless focused on the concept that public safety was the town government's number one goal. As Simsbury began to grow, a nonpartisan Simsbury Police Commission, as described by Jenna, was formed in accordance with Connecticut general statutes to assist the then three-member Board of Selectmen in managing and upgrading the then relatively small and unsophisticated group of police officers into the broadly professional and knowledgeable group of public safety officers it currently is. This annual meeting of the, of the Board of Selectmen and the Citizen Police Commission uh, was instituted and codified in our town charter to foster a director, foster a director, direct avenue of communication between these commissioners who focus on public safety and an increasing sophistication of law enforcement and community policing. And you, the Board of Selectmen members and our new town manager, who focus broadly on all things Simsbury. We have a little slice, it's a deep slice, but it's a little slice. You guys got everything else. You got it too. It's our opportunity and responsibility after a year of oversight and management each year to report to you the status of the nationally credited police department. And what we believe have to review a public demand for both increasingly sophisticated policing matters and at the same time more transparency, the bare minimum necessary to keep our department at the high level of effectiveness that it currently is. And that's my background. Uh, and I've been in your shoes and I've been in, as I say, the Board of Finance here. Uh, and it's just, uh, it's an aid. The commission is an aid to you guys to make your decisions. There you go. Thank you.
So to kind of piggyback on what Mike was saying, you might be thinking like, why do we not hear from every commission that comes forward with a budget? And as I noted, we have budgetary authority, which is, um, pretty unique to the Police Commission. And several years ago, when the town charter revision commission was meeting, um, there was a concern if we moved to a town manager system of government that the input of citizens could get lost for the budget in the process. So, uh, this commission was specifically created to interact with the public as well as the town. And because public safety is paramount, the decision makers decided that the Police Commission would have the opportunity to present the Board of Selectmen its budget first. That way you would know what the Police Department was asking for, why they were asking for it. You would still get the professional town manager budget, but you'd also get the citizen input, which is why we're here today. Um, we're gonna be presenting our budget, which we believe is the absolute minimum to provide, uh, the citizens of Simsbury with adequate public safety. So, now we get to. Woo-hoo! What drives our budget? Uh, when we meet and we're discussing our budget priorities, we always consider community policing. If you are not familiar with community policing, uh, simply put, it's a relationship and a partnership between law enforcement and the community, which helps build trust and allows us to identify and proactively often address public safety issues. Uh, it, we work together to solve problems and it helps also educate the public on public safety issues. And this has been a philosophy that the Police Department has adopted for many, many years, um, and something that we stick firm with. When we are considering the budget, we also want to make sure that we maintain the exemplary level of service we already are providing. And we want to proactively address any issues that are going to affect public safety. And we're taxpayers, so we are also gonna balance fiscal responsibility with what is needed to maintain the level of service that this town deserves. Deserves. So, the actual budget. What are we asking for? Um, I've divided this kind of in two areas, the operating and the capital non-recurring or CNR. So I'd like to talk about operating first. We are asking for staffing, specifically two full-time civilian police clerks. Currently, the Police Department has thirty-nine sworn officers, seven dispatchers, four and a half, uh, professional staff, and an animal control officer. We are authorized to have forty-two sworn officers, so we currently have three vacancies, which we're actively recruiting for. If you know somebody that you think would be a great candidate, send them over to policeapp.com. Um, but last year, we asked the Board of Selectmen for three sworn officers, one full-time police clerk, and additional time for our part-time clerk. At that time, the Board of Selectmen decided to authorize one sworn officer and commissioned a staffing study of the department. The, uh, staffing study went out on RFQ. Several vendors were interviewed and they decided to go with an organization called Certus. Certus came in, they looked at all of our data, they looked at the types of calls, the number of calls, how long our calls lasted, they interviewed the command staff, they interviewed the rank and file, they talked to town employees, they talked to stakeholders. And after they went through all of this information, they compiled the Police Department Staffing and Workload Study. In that, they concluded that the Simsbury Police Department is an excellent organization. The quality of the management and the dedication to public safety by its employe- employees is outstanding. The structure and organization of the department are sound, the patrol schedule is well-designed, and personnel deployment and staffing are consistent with the workload demands. However, additional resources are required. In that report, they recommended that the Police Department add five staff members, two additional sworn officers and three clerks, two police clerks for, uh, two records clerks and one general police clerk for admin. Despite this Certus recommendation saying that we should have two additional officers, and despite our ever-increasing use of overtime, and despite the fact that our department falls below the comparable town, the regional, and the state ratio for officer to resident, we are not asking for those two additional officers at this time. As I mentioned, uh, we have three vacancies and the current climate makes it very difficult for us to fill those vacancies. At this time, we are asking for two civilian police clerks. And you might be wondering, what does that mean? What do they do? Well, let me tell you. Um, right now, there are various assignments and records they could assist with, whether that's fingerprinting, uh, applications, pistol permits, or data entry. Uh, there's administrative support options for our training as well as community service. Uh, and there's very, various documents that we would like to have digi- digitized. Right now, the chief is working with the town to look into a digitalization program, which would take a lot of our records and set up a system so that they are digitalized. It would get rid of about fifty percent of our paperwork. But we need employees then that can continue this process so that we don't have to keep going in and hiring a company to come and put all of our stuff into the great cloud. Um, in addition, there's been a lot of work that Certus noticed that we have backlogs. Uh, for example, in two thousand twenty-three January, the state requested that all uh, records of certain types of cannabis violations be erased from people's, uh, records. So we have not been able to do that at all. We have various procedures and checks and balances so that information would never be released, but we haven't been able to physically go in and redact that information as the state has requested. In fact, this month, in January twenty twenty-four, the state has enacted the Clean Slate Act, which, um, includes other infractions and violations that have to be re- redacted or removed from people's records. Again, we haven't been able to do that, we just don't have the manpower. While we have procedures in place so that information is not, uh, released, we do need to do it. Um, an ongoing records backlog has to do with court abstracts. The courts regularly send over abstract information and in the ideal world, we take that information, our records people submit it into our computers and the computers say wah-dah-wooh, and they do what they need to do. In reality, when it goes in there, a lot of bells and whistles get wrong because that information does not always match up. Whether it is a typo on somebody's name or a transposition of numbers, uh, which requires then someone to manually go in and make sure that Jennifer with a J is the same as Jennifer with a G and look at that information and manually update it. So we have, um, years of backlog with that information that we need to also address. So that's kind of a broad sweep of what these clerks could do for the department. Which leads us to our next item of overtime. Uh, we are asking for an increase of the overtime budget to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you read my memo, you will know that we were, I think, a hundred and nine thousand over budget for fiscal year twenty-three. We are projected to be another hundred thousand dollars over budget in overtime for fiscal year twenty-four. Overtime continues to increase due to staffing, staffing levels, whether that's from vacancies for positions we don't have filled or from people out with sick vacation or training, or for long-term if they are out for extended leave due to injury or illness. Um, today, if you were to look at our department right this minute, our patrol force is down twenty-five percent due to officers being out on extended leave. We have three vacancies, we have another officer in the academy, we have three people out for, uh, extended leave for serious medical stuff that's gonna be for months. We have another officer out for an uncertain amount of time. Um, another officer out who hopefully will be back at the end of the month, and we have somebody on modified duty. That's our patrol force. So when you hear that, you think, oh, well, we'll just hire more people and that'll clear up overtime. Unfortunately, overtime is not solely a function of staffing. Overtime is used in holdover situations. So a holdover situation occurs if, um, I'm a patrol officer, there's an accident, I go to the accident and oop, my shift is done, but this accident is not done. I am gonna stay there as the officer, complete whatever needs to be done at the scene, but then I'm also gonna come back and fill out all the paperwork. Incidentally, several years ago, the state changed the filing for motor vehicle accidents and something that only took about twenty or thirty minutes now takes up to four times that. So that officer is going to be in an overtime situation until they complete that duty. Overtime is also used to backfill critical positions. So, um, the community has reached out and they wanted to make sure that we had an SRO in our schools all the time. In order to do that, our SROs, sometimes they have vacation, they have sick leave, or they're getting training, we need to backfill that position. Um, so that is another critical position in which we use overtime. Overtime also supports community events. Um, and I'm gonna take a moment to talk a little bit about the community events as well as.
I don't know why they're talking.
Um, and the programs such as the Police Cadet Program and the Citizens Police Academy, which we use overtime to, uh, keep going. The Citizens Police Academy came to a screeching halt during COVID. And last year was the first year that they were able to bring it back. And I attended, as did Wendy and Diana's husband Jonathan, and I think all three of us will tell you it was an amazing experience. So I'm gonna make a little plug right now to ask that if you have the time and you can fit it into your schedule, it should start around the end of February, you attend. You are gonna get the opportunity to learn all about what our Police Department does. You wanna know what happens on patrol, you'll get to ride along with a patrol officer. You wanna find out in dispatch, how do we locate a missing dog? What happens when a non-emergency call comes in on nine-one-one? You will get to sit in dispatch and witness that. You're gonna get to meet the, uh, emergency rescue team people and you can put on their gear with their night goggles and maybe you don't know how to use night goggles and you run into a wall. Maybe that's just me, but, um, you'll get to try it out. You'll get to meet with the hostage negotiator and learn how do they de-escalate a situation? What is the training that is helping them to try to keep not just the person in need, but our officer safe? You'll get to meet with the motor vehicle accident construction team that are gonna teach you that you should have paid better attention in math because it turns out calculus and trigonometry are used in everyday life as they do all of this accident reconstruction. Um, but more importantly, you'll get to meet Mark, our head of records, and you'll get to find out how we still have papers that come in like the three where you have to write really hard because that's what the state wants, so it comes out in triplicate. Uh, you'll get to see things that come out of a dot matrix printer from the state because we need to use that printer. Um, it's a great experience and not only will you learn about all of the functions of our Police Department, you're gonna get to meet the members of our force and the amazing officers that we have and really see how lucky this town is. So, just gonna take a little moment, um, and highly recommend you attend the Citizens Police Academy. And then I'm gonna move on to vehicles. Um, we are, so I don't wanna say vehicles are pro forma, but we have a six-year system and we are constantly rotating through our patrol and administrative vehicles. This year, we're asking for three hybrid patrol cars. We currently have three that are hybrid already. The previous Board of Selectmen were very interested in looking into, uh, electric cars. And that's just not a viable option with the type of wear and tear and use that we need from our vehicles. Also, incidentally, uh, we use Ford patrol cars and they do not make a fully electric patrol car. Uh, in addition, we're asking for an administrative vehicle that, uh, will last longer, that's why we only ask for one as compared to three. The administrative vehicles don't have the same wear and tear that the patrol ones do. That concludes my operating portion.
Jenna, you were gonna make a comment about the fuel efficiency of the hybrids that's actually saving the department money.
Yes, it saves thirty-five percent on average of fuel. All right, capital non-recurring. So, some of these items are state-mandated services. For example, the body worn cameras that our chief is so kindly modeling for us as well as the dashboard cams are required by state and, uh, the information that is recorded on those are state-mandated. The expense for fiscal year twenty-five will be forty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Also state-mandated are the interview recording, interview room recording systems. And that can be renewed in fiscal year twenty-five for four thousand seven hundred dollars. Along the same line are the ballistic vests and tasers. Uh, ballistic vests have a five-year life expectancy. After five years, they need to be replaced. In fiscal year twenty-five, we will have two that have expired. We also will have filled those three vacancies, so we will need five vests. Um, they will run approximately five thousand dollars total, but there is the Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Grant Partnership. And we will seek to get some sort of, um, grant from them to help defer those costs. In fiscal year twenty-three, you all approved the new tasers. They are fantastic, thank you. Uh, but they are under contract for service and warranty and so that cost in fiscal year twenty-five will be thirty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Which brings us to the last item on our capital non-recurring budget that I wanna discuss, which are renovations. Uh, the town did a facility study and Certus also did a facility study. And both support the need for a new police facility. Whether you look at the fact that we have one public interview room or that we are maxed out on female locker space or that the training room can't contain everyone to train them, uh, there are many reasons. And we collectively need to figure this out. This is an immediate concern and something we're gonna have to start considering. However, in the interim, the Police Department has met with the former town manager and the interim town manager and the town engineer and I think at one point planning and this Police Commission to try to find an immediate solution, like what's gonna help us right now. And came up with two renovate, two renovations related to records. Specifically, and this is where I got pictures because I understand that some of you have not toured our Police Department. Unacceptable, unacceptable. But this is our records. Um, I had a professional photographer who also moonlights as the chief of police, take some pictures for us. And this is the door to, that you go in on the left. When you walk into the left, you are faced with those rolling carts, which are called high-density storage. We would like to remove those carts and put in workstations for our two police clerks. This is just more of records. You can see there's no space to add our current clerks. Uh, on the left is the record supervisor's office. And on the right, you can see the, uh, workstation for our current full-time records clerk and our part-time records clerk next to him. So that is what the records room looks like where we're asking for renovations to put into workspaces. This is, um, what we are no longer referring to as dead storage because that sounds bad. Uh, this is, what are we calling it now? Our storage area?
Storage.
We're just gonna call this storage.
Record storage.
This is our record storage. Uh, again, you've got a nice door on the left that is secured with a code. Uh, and when you walk in, you will notice that we have every type of filing cabinet and box, uh, crammed in there. If we, uh, go forward with renovations, we would take high-density storage and put it in this room. Ideally, the digitalization of our records gets rid of fifty percent of these two rooms of paper. And thus, all of the remaining stuff would fit on those high-density whoa, whoa, whoa carts in here. They're not carts, that was my misnomer. Um, but those, that, that's the space we're talking about when we mention renovations. Which concludes all I have to say. So I just wanna ask that you work together with us to strengthen the commitment to community, community policing, that you help us allocate appropriate resources to the Police Department and invest in the short-term and long-term needs of the Police Department. I am gonna open it up to questions. Uh, I will gladly answer questions. You can fire them at the chief, the deputy chief, or any of the other commissioners who I am sure would love that.
So, can I, I just wanna say a couple things, because we have new members of the board, they, they may already know this. Um, but what happens is, this is gonna end up circling back to us during the budget cycle. So it's gonna go to the town manager as he formulates his budget with the finance director, with other department heads. They'll bring that to us on February twenty-sixth, which is when it becomes our budget to look at and figure out what we wanna do with it. So we will have time, so tonight we can ask questions, but we will have another chance to go back and ask questions because when Mark presents it to us, the chief and the deputy chief will be here, and probably Jenna and Travis and whoever else wants to be here that night. Um, so that's one thing. The other thing I just wanted to mention was the three hybrid, the police vehicles and the administrative vehicle reoccur every, every year. They come out of the operating and they're transferred in, so they show up in both places, kind of. And so that's not a new thing and that's usually approved, um, every year.
Yes, they're considered part of the operating budget and then once they're approved, they get bumped into CNR financially.
And then, the other thing I wanted to just point out was the only new ask in the CNR budget this year is the, um, record storage unit. Um, last, everything else, like you said, is pretty much a carryover, was planned last year to move into this year's budget. And last year, we did have a few additional CNR asks that were new that we approved. They were kind of low-ticket items. And so we did approve those, but there's nothing really new in this year's budget. And then the other thing I would just mention is, last year, the, the priority was the officer with the sergeant upgrade, which we did approve as a board. But we did have a couple other of the nice-to-have asks that didn't make it to the top of the list. So every department has some things that may not make it to the cut, right? And, um, I do see that the police, they did have a clerk in there at that point in time. Um, and you guys estimated a salary of about ninety, ninety K is what I see in here for that. Um, and then a part-time, so I'm just saying, you did try to get that through in the past, but it, it hasn't come to, to a head yet. So, uh, that's what I'm here saying now, like to open it up to, to the board to ask questions. Um, I think, would like to ask any questions on the board that you could, you know?
So I just have a question, um, looking at it from like the, the finance, uh, head, you know, budgetary. If you're looking at overtime and you noted that you, um, you would that you're asking for the budget to increase to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but in fiscal year twenty-three, it was over budget and you're projecting in fiscal year twenty-four, it's going to be over budget. So I'm wondering, why are you not, I mean, we, we all know that the budget is tight and only so much is gonna be approved. But if you already know that it's going to be over budget, why are you not asking for something closer to close the gap?
Uh, that's a fair question. That has been a policy of, um, previous administrations, uh, to kind of keep it tight. And we've been able to cover a lot of this with salary, um, from vacancies and so it's been able to kind of get judged. But yes, there's no question that we will probably exceed the three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Significantly, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. If you're, but just to add to, if you're fully staffed, if for some reason we get to fully staffed and we fill out positions, that could not go over, correct?
It, right, it will knock it down. So in years past, we were able to keep it within the, within the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if today we were able to be fully staffed and hire these vacancies, we won't see those officers uh, by themselves in a solo capacity until next year. So, half to almost three-quarters of the upcoming budget would not be impacted by those and savings. Uh, so we would still have the overtime there. If those injured or modified, uh, officers came back, that would also significantly, uh, help us in the expend, expenditure of overtime. Traditionally, in the past, we were always like safe with one or two officers being out. That's sort of our capacity, what we can handle. Uh, we have been consistently much higher than that. So that's, that's where the overtime problem is. Uh, I can send this around to, but maybe you'll see here, sixty-six percent, it's the orange, gray, and the blue, is vacation replacement to keep up with contractual obligations to staff our patrol officers. Um, sick replacement when they're out and then injury replacement. So sixty-six percent of our overtime is because of, of those things. While thirty-four percent is the holdovers that Jenna explained. Significant investigations, detectives get called out, officers need to hold over for something major that has happened. Some, uh, meetings that we have, so we try to have staff meetings. We tried to shoot four once a month, a couple years ago, that was not working. So we stretched it out quite a bit, but there's only two sergeants working at a particular time, so you have to pay the other ones to come in. Training is a different. Training is a different budget this year, so that that's not affected by this, but there's several things, like filling the SRO positions and the community events that that Jenna spoke about. We did the uh stuff for cruiser this year, and that's outside the hours of the officers who are working that. So we have to pay them, we have to compensate them, and some of them are extremely generous in trying to work their schedule and take a day off here and kind of adjust and flex like that. But we can't ask that of them, you know, all the time, they have they have families and and lives as as well, so. Um, that's where a lot of our overtime is, and it's very difficult to shave that down if your, your department's not as healthy as it could be, or you don't have those positions filled.
Do you um, do the community events for the town also affect your overtime? I'm assuming like when we have concerts at the park, or we have Sims' Very Celebrates, you know, these ongoing town events that we also have that you often have presence.
Those do not, those do not normally affect our overtime, that's paid for through the through the pack.
Do the, yeah.
Yeah. There are some, though, that we have to make sure that our patrol division is staffed larger than we normally would, and Halloween is a good example. So we always wanna make sure that we have at least another uh officer on, you know, during Halloween, because it can be potentially very busy, a lot of pedestrians out. So there are things where we bump up the number of officers, and that generally happens to be my way of doing it.
So let's see, I've I've covered.
Um, so I have a question with the renovation, um, how long would you anticipate the renovation um for it to be completed? And in time, if the department was to move to a new location, what part of that renovation could be transferred to a new location?
So the renovation is, right?
Yeah, I was I was gonna say, the renovation is just office space, so it's not like specialized with police department, it's not a bulletproof wall, and we're not putting in like a firing range. So it would be able to be used by any town offices, uh town town departments, because it's office space.
There's, there's nothing structural to that, so
Okay.
in one of the pictures, you saw the high-density storage shelves that that moved back and forth. So that would be just a, right there on the on the right side. It's it's sort of a simple removal of that, and in place of that, putting two workstations, so two two desks with a little bit of of storage sort of around there. And then units similar to that, but probably not on a carriage and rail system in that other room that we showed you, that's no longer called dead storage.
Totally blew that one.
Something similar to that in that room. So there's no structural change, there's nothing, and it could be used by virtually any department or person that would come in. It's just, that would be open space, desks that are not, you know, bolted down or anything, it's just regular office space. Very usable for anybody else in the future.
Can I add to her question, because I asked you the question, if we had office space upstairs in town hall, would that be usable for those records digitizing, and you wanted to give the answer that you gave me?
Yeah, so um, I'm a little concerned about decentralizing our our workforce. And uh one example that that I didn't, that I didn't give you when you uh was, when we first started our SRO program, we had an SRO, a school resource officer at the middle school. And that person was removed, they were there all day long, so they didn't have interactions with us. So we worked with the school system to make sure they had access to our 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 network. So they could go back and forth by way of checking reports and emails. And then, you know, over the years, adding another, we sort of increased our connectivity, cell phones for them. So they get their text messages, we're connected with them all the time. They start the day off, one at least starts the day off here, and they both normally end the day here, so there's a lot of connectivity. We don't have that, we lose several things, we lose communication, we lose uh some supervision aspect. Uh, we lose the connectivity and feeling part of a department. And that's what I fear if we decentralize our records. And whether, even if it's in the in the building, but removed a level or around the corner outside of where most of the daily interaction is, we're gonna lose a lot of that connectivity. Right now, if you were to stand, uh now at this hour, but during the daytime, if you were to stand in our main hallway in the secured section of the police department, you're gonna see people coming in and out of records on a regular basis. Uh, talking to the officers, talking to the commanders, talking to um us, talking to people in the public about reports, about requests, about documents. We're going to, we're gonna extend that time, but to also be very much removed and not part of the team. When an officer does a great job and gets recognized for it, it's really a team effort. And we don't wanna separate that part that doesn't normally get recognized for the great work that we do. It's not just the officers, it's it's the support staff as well, so. Decentralizing, temporarily, I'm okay with that, we had to go through that when we renovated here in two thousand and five. We were split up quite a bit, and we could already see some issues with that, but we knew it was temporary, uh and so then we all came back together. We had a substation at one point down at at uh, uh, at downtown mall. That was another challenge for us, because we had, although it was great to have a location to be able to do a report, it was, it was too isolated. So um, those are all the reasons why that I I feel that maintaining a centralized uh division is best.
Yeah, so I wanna give everybody else a chance, who, Curtis has a question?
I have a couple of questions for you, um, thanks for the tour, it's definitely fun getting to see all this stuff in your life. Um, when you talk about the two additional clerks, because you currently have one and a half, I believe. Um, those two additional clerks, once, or one, how long does the the digitization take? Um, as far as transferring that, and then with that, once that's done, do you still need two additional clerks? Is it like something that's ongoing, you need to keep it up?
Yeah, um, for example, the court abstracts, that's that's forever, they're always sending that information, and it's gotten shoved to the back burner because we just can't get it done right now. So that is something that the additional clerks could, once it's up to date, continue going forward in perpetuity to keep it working. Um, I don't know about the timeframe.
Yeah, so the timeframe, um, to, what was that again, the timeframe?
Well, just like for the for the digitization.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so so we don't know, we're in the, not quite the infant stage, but but just past that as far as having companies provide us with how much that's gonna cost to do, and what's the actual work that's gonna get done. Um, I don't expect that that would be a very long process. Uh, you know, we don't have that many records compared to large corporations that that have to go through this, so if I was to guess, it would be maybe a month's worth of time. What would be, is gonna be a challenge for us is figuring out how we can move forward without using a service like that in trying to create our documents, in maintaining our documents digital. So we can stay in one particular uh throughout the time that it needs before we maybe get a new facility. Or minimize the amount of physical space that we need, period, wherever we are. So I I'm guessing about a month or so, but I I really don't know, they haven't gotten back to us on uh an exact quote and a a length of time. We're also looking at
But the takeaway on this, chief, is that the two clerks, their their primary role is not, is not the digitization.
They're not doing that.
That's right, they're they're correct, they may help soltate, but they're not.
Right, they they may be picking up the moving forward aspect of that, how to maintain that. But we did have a uh a police clerk that worked up until two thousand and fifteen. When he retired, uh we didn't fill that position, that was a part-time position, seventeen and a half hours a week. And he did a lot of things that were like, uh, picking up some of the pieces that were, that were sort of left behind. Um, and then he also did fingerprints. So he, uh, we do roughly seven to eight hundred fingerprints a year, and we do a ton for the Board of Education. And so now we pull an officer off of the road to do those, or we use our community services officer, Jamie Ball, who now has the dog, to do those prints. So he's tied up for most of one day a week doing these prints, where he would best be suited out in our schools, in our communities, at groups, um, doing the other aspects of of his job. Where a police clerk may be able to pick that back up where we love that.
Is it, is a clerk an actual officer?
No, no, it's not an actual officer, that's a civilian position, yeah.
I just wanted to um mention, I know, I I think we talked about this, the digitization of the um, the whole project is a town project, it's not part of the police budget because other town departments were looking to have their records digitized as well.
So is that out, you're outsourcing that, sorry, it would be an outsource to someone to do all the digit?
Yeah, we've reached out to two or three companies to provide some
And it will be, and it's not in this budget, but it could be in our town budget.
Is it, is the town clerk salary that you, was in the request from last year, or is that, has that salary stayed consistent, or has it increased?
So I think what you're, what you're referring to last year was the salary and benefits
Okay.
of a, of one single um uh police clerk. So what we did this year, thinking that it's gonna take some time for the renovation part to happen. It's gonna take some time to hire, we factored in maybe eleven months per uh, per new clerk. And we we averaged between a police clerk and a records clerk, and there's a slight difference in there. Um, so we'd have to go through and figure out where that best fits. So it is roughly in the budget, salary-wise, roughly forty-five to forty-eight thousand dollars per employee, and it's for an eleven-month period. So if we were to extend that out to a one-year period, it's roughly fifty thousand dollars per employee, not including benefits. We don't budget for the benefits on on our end.
Um, I don't know, Steve and or Kevin have questions down this end, before anybody has another?
Just to to add on to that conversation, because now I'm I'm a little bit unclear, is it uh these two clerks um, full-time permanent positions, or is it a full-time temporary position? You mentioned the eleven months, and that's what threw me off.
Sure, yeah, full-time permanent, the eleven months is because we probably would not be able to hire them July one. So instead of budgeting for them July one, we were budgeting for an August one start. Um, and then to sort of piggyback on that, the Certus report, the the staffing and workload study that they did, they didn't factor in like anything else moving forward, they took a look at, what is the workload two years ago? And what do you need in this office to maintain the workload? And it was two additional full-time employees, you know.
To add to Kevin's, is there an option of contracting somebody, um, and not giving the benefits of the town, or something like that? For those positions?
Sorry, but
I- is there an option potentially to use a contractor, not not hire somebody on staff, but to bring somebody in without benefits for these positions?
Um, I would say union-wise, probably, probably not.
Oh, union, yes, okay.
Uh, would be, would be one of the biggest things, the second would be, like, there's a lot of uh trust that we have in the employees, because they're hence handling a lot of sensitive information. And I think that's important to uh add to some sort of uh ownership and responsibility.
I, a different tact, um, with the overtime budget, I'm wondering a a couple, I I'm coming up to speed on several things, so I apologize in advance. Um, I would be interested in that uh pie chart you have at some point in the future, doesn't have to be right now. But is any of this overtime required? I know like construction projects must be at overtime rate. Is any of that overtime contractually because of that type of thing? Or this is just true overtime, like an occupation has overtime?
Yes, ve- very, very common question, like a lot of people think that is budgeted for those officers to be out there. None of it is budgeted for them, they, it does not come from the budget. So if ever source, for instance, is looking for an officer, or two officers, whatever it may be, any construction, any roadside construction that you see, they're being paid by that company.
So that's not in your overtime?
That's not in there whatsoever.
This is for our, so Wendy and I were just, you can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but Wendy and I were talking about this. So each shift has, under the IBPO contract, X amount of patrol officers we have to have on a shift. And so if one of those officers is not there, we have to, under contract, fill that position. And that's either the back, that's the overtime. Now, there's a tweak to that, which it becomes mandatory overtime if nobody wants it. So if we say, hey, listen, we're gonna have this A shift on Monday, and we need somebody there, and everyone's like, yeah, sorry, then it becomes not just regular overtime, but it's mandatory, because we have to order somebody to come in and cover that shift.
That seems fair, to be frank. Sticking with the overtime um topic, though, I noticed at the end that the Police Cadet Program and Citizen Police Academy are actually broken out as strictly overtime. Is there a reason they're strictly at overtime pay?
Because of the hours, so our
So it's just an hour overage above our men, our workforce?
Our cadet program is uh run and managed by our school resource officers. And so they're in the school uh from seven AM generally to to three PM, and the students are obviously in school. Our cadet program then meets after that. So the SROs have already put in an eight-hour day. So they are now with the students and with our cadets, outside of their regular eight hours. And they've already put in eight hours that day, so that's why there's overtime for that. To run a program like that, we would have to, you know, have it during their their eight hours that they're working, or else have somebody else manage it, and our patrol officers are on rotating schedules. So one may work Monday this week, where next week they have, they have Monday off. Um, our SROs are trained specifically for um interactions with our youth. Uh, they're connected with them, they see them on a daily basis, so that's why our cadet program is uh basically funded by overtime. And the other one was the Citizens Police Academy?
Yes, actually.
That one is also run during the evening, and that's run and managed by our community services officer, who is in at eight o'clock and works till four. Sometimes they are able to adjust their schedule, but they may have fingerprints, they may have an assignment out with social services at eight AM that day, and now have to stay till ten PM that night to run the Citizens Police Academy.
So just out of curiosity, because of my business background, why wouldn't you create a part-time position that would assist with the fulfillment of those hours at regular time?
Because we
Again, I'm coming up to speed, I
So, so again, I'll answer, there there's some union issues with that, we can't, we can't hire part-time police officers.
Okay, see, I, now I know that one.
But we also need somebody to do the background, so I I received the draft today on what the agenda will be for the uh Citizens Police Academy. And that was created during regular, normal work hours, the coordinating of getting the court personnel in, the, I don't wanna give away everything, but the the visitors from other departments that come in, you know, uh, all that stuff is happening during uh Jamie Ball, our community service officer's regular workday. So it's not, it's not just the hours of the actual Citizens Police Academy, it's all the work that goes in before that, but that's on his normal time.
Okay, so this isn't the entire program?
Correct.
Is that over?
No, and some days he's able to do a little flexing, and in fact, like we may have, uh, this evening, uh, Justin Johnson is working, he's one of our patrol sergeants. He may be on the list to speak to the group, and he may already be working, so he, his presence there and participation is not on overtime.
And I'm not saying that the officers will get called out of the Citizens Police Academy because of a call, but it could happen. I'm just gonna throw that out there, things get crazy.
Is there any sort of um state funding, or any type of funding you can tap into for different academies? Or is there nothing like that out there?
For citizens police academies?
Yeah, I was just curious if there's anything out there to tap into for funding?
There's very little for us to tap into for any funding. You know, we will occasionally see like equipment-related grants, we have one that we will bring for you for traffic enforcement. They're finalizing that one up, it's a, it's a full grant from DOT, uh, so we'll be looking to do that. But very little for uh community engagement at this level. There are cops grants, which we applied to last year to to fund, I was roughly about forty percent of our salary for an additional officer, if you were interested in approving one. Uh, but we were turned down by the federal government on on those grants, but they are few and far.
I I just, um, the one thing I, you know, I do think is that we're select when we paid for the staffing study, and and I think the fact that that we paid for that, that is something, their recommendations are things that we should, over time, be looking to implement, because I just look at why pay the money for the study if you're not going to use it when it comes to our budget, so.
Or we don't do the studies, that's why people don't like studies, because it could spend more money.
I have a follow-up, I have a follow-up question on the uh renovation. So um, do you have a, i- is there gonna be a cost associated with that? Because I did not see a a number associated with it.
I think it's a number seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yeah.
And that was, that was a a rough, a rough number.
I I have one more question, so I know um, a couple of years ago, we got the congressional, like, congressional, from Senator Blumenthal for technology, right? We got denied this year.
Yes.
Is like the whole digitization of things like that, is that a project that could potentially meet the demands of that program?
Yeah, so there are like four to six different categories that that you can try to put your project into.
Yep.
And and that is one, when we received that, we'd applied to that a year and a half before that. So if we were to apply for something like that now, if we were given that grant, we may not see that for another year and a half. Uh, and then we're taking a chance of whether, you know, whether we're gonna get that. The last one that we put in for, that we were denied, was uh enhancing the security of of the building with new security entry pads. Uh, and then also upgrading our emergency medical dispatch, and it didn't, it didn't uh, it didn't go through. We'll be trying it again this year, though.
They say it's on the calendar.
Um, I have a question.
I have a question for Mark, actually.
Yes, sir.
Does, we we've discussed grant writing being so integral to our town budget now. It, does the police force have to pursue their specific grants? Or is that something that someone more generalized within our structure could pursue grants?
So typically, when you're centralizing the grant writing, grant seeking function, the P D would probably be the last department that you would wanna mess with, because and a little bit, I I I also should say maybe engineering as well, but certainly on the policing side. There is a level of expertise in grant seeking that generally you find within the, even the smaller departments, right? So um I I think given where we are here, I, as we look to to centralize and add strength in in terms of grant seeking, uh police wouldn't be the first area that I would look uh for. But but certainly the chief is 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 right. Uh there, the the cops grant's hard to get. Uh D O J has been tightening things, you know, they 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 came up with a lot of grants for body cams a few years ago, obviously. Uh and you know, the 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 times for grants have to be, you have to seize that opportunity when when you have uh when ARPA money was around, a a lot could be done with ARPA money, for example. And I think, you know, some of the, certainly the bigger communities maybe lost a step on grant seeking because they suddenly had the ARPA windfall. Uh so I I think that, you know, police are doing a great job at looking for grants, possibly uh you know, best in the building, frankly, but uh we sh- we're we're looking at that.
Nice.
Uh and you know, one thing I will say is is that the the staff, and I had my first department head meeting today with with uh all hands uh a- after, and this, we're just starting my third week, so uh keep that in mind. Uh but there was uniform, uh there was a consensus that, yeah, you know, we can look harder and more thoroughly for grants. So it's something, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at that. So thanks for the question.
Thank you for the answer.
Yeah, that was a good question. So um if Len, five minutes left, I don't know, Mark, if any, if you wanna say anything left. Jenna, anything else, or you wanna?
I am finished. If you don't have any more questions, I will sit down.
Okay, cause
I I don't. I I met with the chief and a a deputy chief and with the finance team and reviewed the budget. And uh you know, what you've seen here tonight is 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 uh is what they're asking for. Uh they all know the commission knows it's a tough budget, so don't need to hear it from me. But uh we'll be making all our deadlines, so uh and we'll be having more conversations as well. And I encourage you, if you've got any other questions, to uh let me know, cause we're looking at it very closely.
Okay, so in that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
So
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you guys so much.